Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to come together to manage our city's business. We ask that you bless our mayor. We bless all of the elected officials. And as we focus on tonight's agenda, that we are focused on things that be for the betterment of the city, not our own personal agendas, but those that you sent us to be in charge and to be good stewards of it. Remove all distractions. In all of it, we give you the glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name, we ask it all. Amen.
Best allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Maxine Miller. Victoria Harris. Mr. St. Columbia. Mr. Ethely. Ms. Davis, Monica Davis. And Mr. Kyle Miller.
I just want to recognize, we have our local chapter, Delta Sigma Theta, in the crowd, when they try to work me out to the meeting. Audience, thank you, Ms. Bagley, for prayer. We got on tonight's agenda ratifying Resolution Three. Twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ratifying of the budget is simply out of abundance of caution. And what I mean by abundance of caution, city councils only can meet on Zoom as a meeting when there's an emergency established by the governor. There was emergency established in those circumstances. The city council meeting that was held on February first was legal by all means. Notice was given to the newspaper, to the press at large. There was a quorum. The public knew, public was able to participate and see it on Zoom. And so the meeting is legal. The purpose of ratification is simply to satisfy the lawyers, me and the municipal league. Everything that happened is legal. If you all want to vote on it tonight, you can. If you want to wait till the same people who voted to ratify the budget here, you could do it that way. But the budget is in effect. It was voted on in a legal meeting. It was voted on publicly, via Zoom. And so that's what it is. But just for the lawyer's sake, we asked it to be ratified. This. But it is legitimate budget, legitimate pass, legitimate meeting. And so everything that happened in the meeting is legal from standpoint. We just want added protection as it relates to it. So if you all want to take it up tonight, you can. If you just want to table it and move to another meeting, that's fine.
I did not have to say that. Basically, ratifying is saying that the meeting happened, that.
Right.
But we're not ratifying that we agree with the budget. Is that right?
Right. You're not ratifying that you agreed to. But you're ratifying that the meeting occurred, etc., that it was a public meeting that should ratify the actions that were taken in the meeting. Because you're going to do the same when you approve the minutes.
Yeah.
Because the next minute, whenever the minutes were prepared, they had been prepared yet, you're just approving the minutes, minutes approves official record of meeting.
Right.
And so that's all we're doing, is just acknowledging that there was a meeting on Zoom. And that actions were taken at Zoom. And whatever acts were taken in that meeting represent what happened in that meeting.
Yeah.
And that's all we would ask for ratification, a verification that that was a meeting. You know, it says operating budget, but that's based on my email that I see it in the beginning, that's past the budget. Instead of, because that's the only thing you discuss. Would you all want to do it tonight? If you all just want to table it or move to the next meeting, that's fine, too, if you all don't feel comfortable. Because three out of four present voted, nine have supported the budget. And so I can understand that as well.
The three people who voted, because obviously, you don't get, they may feel like they're supporting the budget. So I'll just move the table. Take the pressure off everybody.
Mr. Ethely, the table. We'll just table to the next meeting. So Madam, would you put that on the next meeting? Before we move on, there are some bills on your office table. You've got one is Jones Hydro. Brent Tag Mid-South, again Brent Tag, and Corey Main. I want you all to look at these. These are invoices that are over my spending limit, but we had to have these things done. And I want to make sure. I want to make sure you all would approve these. You can approve them all together or individually. Then one of these are for our chlorine and stuff like that, the water problem. I don't want to do anything with actual knowledge. I want to make sure, I'm going to give you all so much paperwork, it's going to drown you. I want you all to, this is what we're paying. I need you all to help me get this done.
May I, may I? I have a question for you. Now, I asked you just a minute ago before the meeting, you're presenting these checks. The checks have been drafted, but they have not been sent to anybody. And so.
See, the beer, but like Brent Tag and Corey Main LP, I want you all to approve these because that's how we get our chlorine and stuff, and things like this. I just want to make sure you all know what's going on, because if you don't know, and you start seeing money, when Mr. Turner gave out the finance report, I want you all to have an understanding of what's being spent and where the money's going.
For the sake of listening on it in greater clarity, the mayor's spending toward the $5,000. This check to Brent Tag Mid-South is $6,373.16. And this other check, I don't see it. How about the second two?
And then this is another one.
And the check to Corey and Main is $8,749.67. Both would be over the mayor's spending limit. So without approval, council, the.
Sixty-two oh eight is Corey Main. That's sewer pump supplies. Sixty-two twenty-three is Brent Tag Mid-South. That's chlorine for the water. And.
Thompson, what's Thompson?
What are we looking at?
So what are they talking about when they said it was a customer complaint? Who was that? I'm thinking, you know, about all the track codes and stuff, the word damage, sabotage, that's what that is. We hadn't approved it. I just want to try to see what their response to us was about the agreement. So you'll have to take action on that tonight, at least to let you know what the assessments are.
Also, that Thompson beer for the landfill, the Secretary of Transit Simpson says that that work should have been covered by warranty. And that if you look at the bills closely, we paid the nearly exact same amount twice, less than a year ago, for the same equipment. So that's something that we're investigating to figure out what happened and why, and whether it's going to be covered by warranty. But the company is FYI, the other two are routine expenditures, but they exceed the mayor's spending limit. One of the queries, West Carolina One queries, hell.
Okay, so you're asking for approval on the sixty-three seventy-three sixteen and eighty-seven forty-nine sixty-seven?
Yes, sir.
I'll move to approve checks number sixty-two oh eight as presented and sixty-two twenty-three as presented.
Mr. Ethely moves, and Ms. Miller seconds. I'm sorry, discussion. You have that, it's right there in your hand. You have the information right there in your hand. Both of them. Both of them. I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. It's checks, two checks, sixty-two oh eight and sixty-two twenty-three.
Well, that's a motion included both.
Yeah, I moved on both, sixty-two oh eight and sixty-two twenty-three. Those two checks that you have, copy those up. Yeah, that's the one he sounds already approved.
Any more discussion? Madam, which caller?
Mr. St. Columbia. Mr. Miller, Kyle. Ms. Maxine Miller?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a vote, yes.
Next order of business is condemnation ordinance. Municipal League has a sample condemnation ordinance. The ordinance that I sent to the body this weekend was drafted by the municipal league, approved by the municipal league. A group of lawyers from the municipal league reviewed it, general counsel reviewed it, and it is included in their packet, suggested condemnation ordinances. It varies differently from the way we have approached condemnation in the past. And this ordinance, it gives greater penalties for fines, as well as it gives the authority to sale property and things that our ordinance does not have. It more streamlines the position. Now, there were a few questions that were raised. Vacant lots is not included in this because this is specifically, the statute that it comes from specifically deals with raising structures. And so vacant lots, we have a separate ordinance that deals with that. And this does not include vacant lots, only deals with buildings. And the municipal league wanted us to follow it closely because it's what they recommend to every city. For the sake of those who are listening, Arkansas Municipal League is a rich management group that most cities in the state of Arkansas, in fact, the vast majority participate in their program, and they defend cities from lawsuits. They give legal advice and et cetera. And cities pay to be a member of the Arkansas Municipal League. All of the language from this ordinance comes from them, until the body adopts a new one, we will continue to use the old one. As it relates to code enforcement and process, the mayor Franklin has been very generous in communicating with city attorney's office as well as code enforcement. And what do I mean by that? Code enforcement will not work properly until you have, code enforcement needs everybody working in coordination with them. And what I mean is, you have two code enforcement officers in the city, but city code enforcement officers have no equipment. They have limited powers in that they're not the ones who cutting the grass, they're not the ones tearing down buildings, they're not the ones doing any of that. They need the coordination. The coordination has to start with the mayor's office and with all the other department head to assist them. It ends with the city attorney's office. And until the process is done, we can't move forward and get many things done. And so just by way, while we're talking about code enforcement in your city's ordinance, one of the things that's done this year, that the mayor has met with me, and he's met with the two code enforcement officers. And the plan that we have thus far, the code enforcement officers gone through, we have two code enforcement officers on payroll at this time. One is Lakeisha Williams, one is El Magan. They've drawn a line in the city between Canterbury and Ms. Lakeisha Williams is doing the primary responsibility for West Helena and El Magan is the primary responsibility for Helena. And they both do secondary responsibilities for the other side to assist each other. What has happened so far, gone through and taken over a thousand photos of structures and haven't taken the whole city. We have over a thousand properties that need raising at this time. And they've gone through, we started Ohio Street and started at Central, and they're working across the city, going to structure by structure, house by house, getting the inventory in, so we'll know exactly what all needs to be raised. When they finish that, as we go on through, we're going to send letters out. The city attorney's office is going to assist them and send the letters, because it's voluminous, the job that they're doing right now, we need assistance of others to coordinate with. And the mayor asks the city attorney's office to assist them, even though we typically at the end of the process. And so what we're doing is getting the inventory. And we, today, we met, and we've also asked, because many addresses we can't find. So we met with the fire chief today via phone conference, and they're going back over the last five years to getting a list of every burned out structure that they've done, so we can get the addresses, so we can coordinate with in that database, with what's in code enforcement, with what's in the the office, the assessors office. And so we're trying to locate where all the people are and start systematically sending letters to everybody who wants. Now, this ordinance that you have before you is different also, because our ordinance does not have anything for a guardian alight. And the significance of guardian alight is cities have been being sued for absentee owners not getting adequate notice. And so the municipal league has this language in here where they ask the city to retain a lawyer outside of the city attorney. So when a person, you can't find an address, or they live in another state, that they would get notice by the city having some attorney on payroll that you were sending all the notice to, and they would come for a hearing. The other part that's different about this ordinance, instead of us just sending a letter for thirty days and telling them, you need to comply with gold before. This fast tracks it, because what it does, in the language, it tells us, as a city, that we would do is send a letter to them initially. And then when they're not responding, send them a letter saying, hey, you're going to have a hearing before the city council, and they're going to consider this immediately for condemnation. And then the city council only had to pass a resolution versus ordinance. Resolution, we don't have to publish in the paper or any of that. Now, just for, I received an email from the paper about that issue. The city was never required to publish in the paper because it's not a ordinance of general and permanent nature. General means affected everybody. Permanent means long lasting. Condomnis, or in this specific piece of property, and it only lasts until the property is over, so it never was, had to be published. And so that's not a major issue. Going back to it, what is a, is a fast track process to go for, and it also provides fines, where we could take them into the court here and issue citations for them to come before court. Code enforcement had many questions when they met with me today. One of the things they were saying is that, can we do both processes at once? And I said, yes. And for both processes, once, what that means is, there's a civil process where we bring before the city council. There's a criminal process where you could take them before the judge in here, the district court judge. Also, there's a paragraph in here that speaks of the city hiring a lawyer. That's this language the municipal league had. If you want the city attorney to say, hey, city attorney, we pay you, you do that. You can tell the owner to say that. But that's always an option. And there are certain properties that's for judicial public nuisance. When there's been a serious crime, drugs or something completed three times in one year, the city can sue for nuisance for those type of areas. And that's what that language is referring to, was that specific statute, whether you could go in and our lawyers sue, and the city take custody and jurisdiction of that piece of property and use it from that manner. But as much as needed, as relates to code enforcement, and this is going to be one of the things, is going to have to take the considerable consideration from the city council. Because one of the things that the body needs to look, I know we've already passed a budget, but code enforcement, as I said, is an island unto itself, and it requires great coordination on behalf of the mayor's office, getting a lot of things done. And at the last, at the budget meetings, I talked about the problem we had, and I got a bunch of messages from the former administration saying that I didn't make it clear, and that I falsely accused them. I wasn't falsely accusing. Let me be specific about what I mean. When I made the code enforcement, the code enforcement officers need to meet with the sanitation people and communicate with them daily if they're tearing down property, cutting lots. And when I said I didn't receive any documents from anybody, I don't mean a fee scale. What I mean is a completed document where we used this many employees, it took this much time, and we accomplished this task, and it was on this piece of property, and I want to lean on that property. Whatever requires communication between the code enforcement and sanitation daily to know, where are you working today? How many employees you have there, and et cetera. And in the previous administration, I kept meeting with both sides and never could get the the administration to resolve the issue, because one would say, it's not my job, I don't have the time, and the other would say, well, I don't know where you are. More specifically, sanitation, public works would say, I gotta try to keep up with all of that. Code enforcement, you get out here and do it. Code enforcement said, I can't do, if you ain't telling me where you are. And so those were the problems that we had in the past, and we couldn't get it forward. And I've met with the mayor about addressing those problems now and asked the mayor to make sure that code enforcement and sanitation are meeting consistently and defining the problems we go forward. I also must inform you that many times, and I ask for people with patience with code enforcement, because many times, code enforcement is running around, there's something to do every day. One of the things code enforcement asks me to ask the city council to do is make sure you do some money for the city's sanitation shop and for this lot over here. There's a vacant lot ordinance that we have that they're not enforcing, because they feel, until the city cleans up their sanitation lot and puts the slats in the fences, and cleans up this lot over here, and does that, that the city would be hypocritical and enforcing it against all the other salvage yards if we haven't gotten out of it. That's what they told me today, and they asked the body, they wanted to be a city attorney to notice the city that we need to make sure our shop has the slats in the fences and according to savage yard, and have this over here property fenced in, popular, so it can't be seen, so we can enforce all those that are in violation of the city. And so that's not on the agenda, but that's one of the things they want to tell me to tell, because they're serious about cleaning up, the mayor's city about cleaning up, but they wanted me to make sure that I raise that with all of the body. Because it wasn't something that was addressed in the financial, in the budget, but it's something that's seriously concerning there. The vacant lot ordinance?
Yes, that's me, the ones you're speaking on now.
Yeah, I emailed it to you all. I emailed it to you on Friday. I don't know if she, if she put it out, put on the table. But if you don't take action on it tonight, that's fine. I want to make sure you've taken a steady approach to it, to make sure that we get it done, and get it done in a manner that we can move forward.
This ordinance from two thousand and seven, the one for the junkyard, junk cars, are we enforcing that?
That's what I just spoke of. We were enforcing it. And when we were enforcing it, we were moving cars all the time. We enforced it during the bad administration heavily. It was enforced during other administrations. Part of the issue we want to, if you read the ordinance, Robert Fordwood R and R, he done his, he has all the slats in the fences.
Okay.
Snyder has all the slats in their fences. But if you look, people started complaining about the city and the sanitation yard. We don't have any slats in the city's fences. If you drive by the sanitation yard, for you to hide all of the cars and all those things. And so the other issue are the vacant cars. We have to have coordination between police chief, mayor, way to towing. Because we used to have a policy in place where you couldn't be on the towing list if you didn't participate in that ordinance. That ordinance, we tag, we tow, at some point, the mayor's office stopped requiring people to be on the towing list to do that. I don't know when that happened, but that's part of the policy that the city used to have. It wasn't a written policy. It was understood by everybody that was towing cars, that you need to help the city tow some of these cars off these vacant lots and et cetera. Go forward. But this code enforcement met with me today, and they want to enforce that ordinance. As part of, they want the city to fix this issues, and they want the mayor and the chief to meet so that we can go forward with rear statement, so we can bring the policy to the council to make it written. We're going to be on tolls and be anticipating that ordinance.
I mean, because I know that's, Mayor and I, because we talked to a lot of people about wanting to clean the city up.
Yes, sir.
I think that this is definitely in the right direction. I can think of three places right now. I got squatting on some of my land right now with a bunch of broken down cars.
Yes, sir.
Well, we did this bad.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We will get back to that, and we will coordinate that with the mayor as well as chief of police and then the towers. Yes. Any questions for me relating to the ordinance?
No, I'll be honest with you, I didn't get a chance to read this. I would like to read it first.
That's fine.
Now, the city has a lot of vehicles that, from the water department, from each department, that we are in the process of getting cleaned up and moved off, because we're going to start with the city first. We're going to take care of what was left. And we're going to get that cleaned up. The sanitation department has got vehicles that had not been running, they got them running. Appreciate Mr. Collins, the prime here for that, getting the street sweeper together, getting some knuckle boom trucks that have been sitting there for the past four years. He's got those up and running, and you should see more movement from our stuff that has, on the city side, has been broken down. We got water trucks that have been damaged and totaled out. We're going to move those and try to set up an auction day to auction some of our old stuff off, so that we can make sure that the city, the same orders that we're putting out, we're going to buy, buy, making sure that we get our city clean. And we'll reach out to local sororities, and this is people in the community who want to be involved, to help us keep our city clean. This is not just my city, it's all of our city. We all live here together, and I want to beautify it together, only when, you know, when out. Next, we have Mr. Amos Ekerson. You come forth.
Comment on that agenda first, is that okay? With regard to the.
With regard to the condemnation ordinance. Um, I reviewed that, uh, we didn't have, I'm I'm on a planning commission, we didn't have a meeting about that, but I reviewed it. And included my comments and it was part of that email chain that was sent around starting Friday. And the one thing that I would say that um I found, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, I don't have a legal background. But one thing that I found that's important um to make those kinds of things more successful. Is to change the language that says things like. Um, the the person or the property owner will be guilty of a misdemeanor or some sort of criminal act. I found that that's not as effective as just saying this is about the property. I think the legal term is called N R M, if that's uh if that rings any bell with you guys. And that too, and then the second thing, when it gets down to the fines, to not leave it ambiguous, like. You'll be guilty of a of a fine of five hundred dollars to one thousand dollars. But to actually have a schedule and break it down and say, it's, you know, it's two hundred dollars for this kind of infraction, three hundred dollars for this or five hundred dollars for that. If it's a commercial property that's in really bad shape, you know, that's the thousand dollars. So that way it's that way, nobody, nobody in the future can come back and say, oh, you, they only got a fine two hundred dollars and I got fined a thousand and that just doesn't seem fair. So that was just the some of the key things from from that.
Well, as it relates to that, that will be up to the to the judge, but most statutes are written that way. Because the judge would look at the severity of it and determine, this may be worth two fifty, this may worth a thousand. But, yeah, but the, as relates to the N R M action. Uh, the reason, the language of misdemeanor in there is so it could go to the district court of Phillips County. And be prosecuted because under that, under that, the uh. Code enforcement office will be doing affidavit or citation for bringing criminal charges against the person. And that's, that's why that language is there.
Okay.
But again, this is drafted by the Mississippi, currently, the only thing I did was plug and play, got Helen West, Helen, just put in the blank. And all the other changes were made is what says code enforcement versus building efficient. This is their ordinance, how they drafted and how they want it done. But you have a presentation as well?
Sure, if we're ready to move on, I'll start.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you so much for having me here. Um, I, you know, watched a lot of the budget talks and that's what inspired uh this presentation. And I know that you guys are all probably all exhausted about talking about budgets. Um, but I think this is going to be a little bit more interesting in that that instead of talking about cutting and trying to squeeze a little bit over here and squeeze a little bit over there. I'm going to talk about new income streams or new possible income streams. So, right, you know, everybody knows whether it's personal finance or business finance. If you're spending more than you're taking in, you've got a problem, you've got two options, spend less or make more. And so I'd like to talk about some creative ideas about how we can uh possibly increase uh find some new revenue streams. The the first part of this is just the cover letter that I sent uh to the city clerk. I don't know if she circulated it or not, but I'm not going to read it, I'll let you read it on your own time. So move on to the third page that shows the satellite image of the city, the city limits. Um, a lot of the data that I'm going to talk about comes from a study that I had authored in two thousand and two thousand and one. And it was called the future of downtown Helen, Arkansas. And I really wanted to study the city in totality, but it just was physically too big for one person to do. So I focused on downtown. Now, I don't think that there's all that many differences between downtown and the rest of the city. So I'm basically just saying, I'm gonna, a lot of the data that you're going to see is specific to downtown. But I like to extrapolate that and apply it to the to the to the city limits. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the the key issue that this this project focused on was vacant abandoned and deteriorated properties. Uh, what we commonly refer to as blight. Um, everybody, everybody's driven around, everybody knows you've you've already had some mentions of things. This is my neighbors in my own yard, we've got problems, it's no, it's no uh. Um, it's no secret. And it's so exciting to hear that code enforcement is already starting to try to quantify this on a larger scale. Um, this little map right here was just the map that I made of the downtown area. Yeah, I walked around, did the same thing, it sounds like what code enforcement did, took a picture with my phone, made sure I had the GPS on so I could, you know, associate those. Uh, and then I categorized some things, whether they were in a severe state of disrepair, whether it was abandoned. Um, whether it was just like a collapsing building or burnout or ruins. Um, or whether it was something else like excessive vegetation, automobiles, miscellaneous junk. And so that's what all those dots represent. So next slide, please. The, so in the uh, there's, there's some city ordinances that go back to two thousand and six and two thousand and seven. That deal with minimum maintenance standards. And these were set up specifically for the Cherry Street Historic District. Now, I would love to talk about how we can rewrite those ordinances and make them apply citywide, because I think that's what we should do. And it sounds like we're going in the right direction with the condemnation ordinance. But let's talk about some numbers here, just in this little tiny section of town, the Cherry Street Historic District. There's twenty eight properties that are violating that ordinance and have been for a very long time. Um, if you look up the fee schedule in there, that represents twelve thousand dollars per day that we're losing out on in unenforced fines and fees. In one year, that's four million dollars, okay? You guys have an operating budget in two thousand and twenty three of five million dollars, so that's eighty percent of the entire city budget right there. Since two thousand and six, if you were to add that up, it's over forty million dollars, okay? That's the scale that we're talking about, that's in just that little tiny postage stamp of of the city. All right, so that's a pretty, pretty significant uh issue there. Um, let's go to the next slide. The second opportunity, actually, the next three opportunities all have to do with uh property tax issues. And I know this is going to involve the county, this actually involves a lot of different departments because the county, the college, the city. And the schools all uh have some say in, you know, benefit from property taxes. The situation that we've got right now, if you look at uh, if you look at a property and it's in good shape. The the average residential unit is assessed at around five thousand dollars. If if your neighbor's house is falling down or burned out or dilapidated or abandoned, the average assessed value is two thousand dollars, okay? So that's like giving, that's like rewarding this behavior, right? You're getting a sixty two percent discount on your property taxes for having a uh, having what we don't want, right? If it's a commercial property, it's even worse, average assessed value for people who are taking care of their property, they got it. Uh, it's in use, they got a business there, they're generating sales tax, right? They're doing all their things right, their average assessed values are fifteen, it's almost sixteen thousand dollars. And their neighboring building that's falling down is only assessed at five thousand dollars, which means we're giving them a sixty eight percent break on their taxes. If you uh, just in the little downtown area, that's thirty three thousand dollars a year. If you extrapolate that to citywide, that's almost a quarter of a million dollars a year. And if you extrapolate it further to the county, that's over three hundred thousand dollars of lost revenues because of the tax discount. Okay, next slide, please. The the third opportunity has to do with residential property specifically, right? So um, if you have a residence in the city and your assessed value is uh six thousand two hundred dollars. That means that your property tax bill will be three hundred, right around three hundred and seventy five dollars. Why is that significant? That's significant because that is the amount of the homestead tax credit. So if there are any residential properties here that are being assessed below six thousand two hundred dollars. Your property, my my own house is assessed for less than that. So my property tax bill is like two hundred and fifty dollars. So there's a huge chunk of money missing that that the assessor should assess my house higher. So that they can benefit from the full three hundred and seventy five dollars of the homestead tax credit, that's just money left on the table. This map right here is all of the, all of the parcels of land. It shows the close to four thousand residential parcels that are considered improved, in other words, not vacant, but have structures on them. Of that two thousand eight hundred and sixty six, approx uh, the two hundred, two thousand two hundred and eighty nine have an assessed value below that threshold. Which means that that's close to, again, another quarter of a million dollars being left on the table, just in this one issue. And so I want to make sure that nobody thinks that I'm sitting here trying to tell everyone we're going, we should raise your property taxes. This is something that could be done and it's not going to affect any money out of your pocket as a as a residential property owner. Okay, next slide, please. Back to the commercial uh issue, and this can be, again, this is data because I studied downtown, we're going to look at some downtown buildings. Um, this is every building and and the numbers above the building represent the uh estimated property tax using the data from two thousand twenty twenty one. So that would be, this is what people would be paying this or in two thousand twenty two for the two thousand twenty one tax year. All of the numbers in green are for buildings that are in active use, that have businesses, people are maintaining them, taking care of them, generating sales tax revenue. All of the numbers in orange are basically abandoned, vacant, falling down. Just take a minute and and see what the trend is here. Every building that's in use is getting, is paying a premium for for property taxes. And everybody who's leaving their building partially falling down, right, causing harm to all the rest of us is getting a break. Something that I learned about that a lot of other uh cities, especially small towns around the country are doing is instituting something called a vacant property tax. And this is a special thing that goes on the tax bill for properties that are being held uh i- in a state of vacancy. And so it says, all right, you want to have this building, you want to own it and maybe hope that there's going to be some big payday, some. Big developer is going to come to town and pay you two million dollars for your falling down building. That's fine, you can hold on to it, but you're going to pay a premium, you're going to pay, you you're almost going to pay the city an endowment, right? Because the city has responsibilities to keep the sewer going by, the water going by, we still have streets in front of that building, we still have sidewalks, right? And then plus, you're not generating any other sales tax revenue, so you're costing the city in all those different ways. So that's fine, you want to keep your building like that, you just have to pay us a fixed amount to do that. And that's called a vacant property tax, there's all kinds of different ways to structure it, but that's the basics of it. The next slide is just more of the Cherry Street Historic District. Um, you know, I like the forty dollars, we saw seventy eight dollars for that one building that was falling down. And there's just no disincentive for people to to, there's no incentive for people to do anything, there's no disincentive to not do anything, hence we have all these issues. And so it's the same thing extrapolated throughout the rest of town, next.
The ones in orange, those people pay no taxes at all, are you?
No, 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 they pay, well, the ones that say zero, those are zero taxes because they're held by a nonprofit and apparently that.
Sure.
That negates the.
Yeah, but like, like, um.
This is, this is.
Like the the building near the Marinos.
Okay, yeah, Murdochs, where's?
Jay C Penning, they don't pay property, yeah.
Here's Murdochs, they pay five hundred dollars roughly in property tax. They're there generating sales tax revenue and keeping up their building, right? And then this building right next to them that's falling down only pays a hundred and eighty six dollars in 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 property tax.
I got it. So we're just rewarding this behavior, right? You're penalizing all the people who are making investments and and uh creating an incentive for people to do nothing, right? Any other questions about that?
No.
Okay, okay, we can continue on. Right, this is uh, this is the newest and my most, my 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 most favorite uh opportunity here and it has to do with the. Or it's twenty six from two thousand and six. And it has to do with the junk automobiles or the automobile salvage yard. So we already had some people start estimating, how many, how many of these things do you think we have around town? Anybody want to take a guess? Hmm, anybody from the audience want to take a guess? Ten, okay, okay. If it's, if it's one, it's twenty five dollars a day, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month, nine thousand dollars a year. If you've had one car sitting out there since the ordinance was passed, that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, right? If it's ten, just multiply that by ten, right, two hundred and fifty dollars a day, seventy five hundred dollars a month, ninety one thousand dollars a year. Since two thousand and six, one point five million dollars, it adds up fast. Um, maybe it's a hundred, maybe it's a thousand, maybe, maybe it's three hundred and forty one cars, right? Junk cars, why did I pick three hundred and forty one? If you look at the dollars per month that three hundred and forty one junk cars generates at twenty five dollars per day. It's exact, it's pretty close to the same amount of sales tax revenues that the city gets every month and for the total year. That's roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a month and just a little bit over three million dollars a year. But let's say it's worse than that, let's say it's uh five hundred and sixty two, five hundred and sixty two junk cars. Over the course of one year is the same amount of the total city budget this year, five million, one hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars and some change. I thought that was interesting, there's just some big numbers, uh, next slide, please. Okay, so this is great, nobody has a magic wand, we can't just wave a magic wand and just say, let's make out, make all this stuff turn into, you know, a fire hose of cash. How are we going to do this? Well, it starts with the commitment and the political will and everybody in this room is really the most, the key people with that. Um, the second thing, I think, is that we have to expand and create and and turn the code enforcement into a true department of code enforcement. And on the the right side of the sheet there, I'm showing how I'm suggesting that we structure that similar to like the fire department or the police department. You've got a chief, you've got assistant chief, you've got a secretary, you might even have a special legal counsel on as part of that department. And then you have officers. So that it's not just a couple of people getting paid, you know, twenty eight, thirty thousand dollars a year. With all this responsibility, all this training, there's so much expected of them, there's just no way that the current structure can implement some of these things. But I know Maxine's going to want to know, tell me the bottom line, that's six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars for my suggested department of code enforcement. So it sounds like a lot of money, you guys were trying to squeeze and find two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, and this is three times that. But what's interesting about the department of code enforcement is that unlike most of the other departments. It has the ability to generate more money than it actually costs, right? Um, the police department, I suppose, could write a whole lot of speeding tickets, I don't know, I haven't done the math on that. But you have this one department, this one small investment could yield. Extreme amounts of new income for the city, right? And it's not just about the income, you know, it's about also trying to get the incentive structures right, so we get our city looking right. We want to clean things up, we want to get participation from private uh private people, right, private property owners. Um, and so we've got this, we've got the idea, we need to expand the code enforcement, we need to write, revise and update the codes. And we're, it sounds like we're already on the right track there, then we need to actually enforce them, okay? Like, clearly, we've been lax in that and there's a lot of money left on the table. So we're not going to access any of it without enforcing the codes. Um, and then the last couple of things are just, uh, you know, the idea of unity, cooperation and sacrifice. Uh, the city attorney was talking about how everybody needs to work together, this really affects all these different departments, especially when it comes into the property tax issues. Um, and get creative, I I think I've tried to maybe present a couple of ideas here. But certainly, maybe knowing some of this information will give you all, you know, you're going to bed, I maybe the last thing you'll think about is. Some creative way to 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 kick this in the right direction. Um, and sacrifice, uh, I think that there's an element of public service that implies a certain amount of sacrifice. And it's not much, but I would like to commit my little tiny piece of the budget. Um, as a, as a commissioner of the planning department to go towards this. Uh, so whoever is in charge of, Eric, I don't know if that's your job or what, but if somebody could. Uh, take any money that was owed to me or will be paid to me in two thousand and twenty three and put it towards this, I'd just like to get the ball rolling. Um, next slide, please. So then, assuming we can tap into this fire hose of cash, what are the, some of the things that we can do about it? Uh, I'm just going to give it, I'm just going to throw three ideas out there. Um, that I kind of thought about as I was listening to the budget discussions. Um, it seemed like a lot of the budget talks were about department heads and not a lot of it was about the people actually doing the work. I know, uh, I heard Dr. Miller say, you know, we don't, we don't have the job descriptions, we don't know if we're associating an appropriate amount of money for the right amount of. Responsibility and how that compares on that position around the state. But I just wanted to remind people that, um, you know, those are people, they have, they have to live in a house, they have to buy. But I just wanted to remind people that, um, you know, those are people, they have, they have to live in a house, they have to buy food, they have kids. They want to save for college, there's this thing called a living wage and you can look up the statistics. Um, and that that chart is for Phillips County. And so the reason I put that in there is because when you look at the living wage breaks all that stuff down and talks about, you know, really what kind of um income can you live off of if you are single, if you're single and raising kids, how many kids, whether you have two adults, whether they're working, whether one's staying at home, taking care of the kids. And it just shows that a lot of the people towards the bottom of this list. You know, we're 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 a small town, we don't have a huge pool of applicants. When we start paying things like less than thirty thousand dollars, you can really only you're really only going to get people interested who are either single with no children or have two adults both working. And and have their children, right? So if you have, I mean, if there's, I I don't know if there's any single parents in this town, I would wager there are probably quite a few. But they can't, they can't afford to even come and work for the city, uh, unless they're going to get one of those uh director jobs. So for future discussions, I just think, I just want to introduce this idea of a living wage. It's a, it's a great way to make sure that you're, you know, being honest and and wi- with the people who are actually doing the work. Uh, next slide please. And this is the last one. Um, certainly we know we have uh infrastructure, water and sewer issues, I don't think I need to talk about that at all. Um, and then finally, the final recommendation here is what I call the community reinvestment fund. So if we've got this surplus of money and we put it into an institutional investment account in the same way that you would create a brokerage account and buy mutual funds for retirement or set up a, you know, a a a plan, an education plan for your kids. We do that on the institution as a city, right? And we leave it there and we let it generate interest, earn evidence. And then after a while, we got enough of a nest egg, we can withdraw on that, a few hundred thousand dollars a year, depending on how much, you know, the principal is. And we can then incentivize private uh private property investment, so let's say we got somebody trying to do the right thing. You know, we can buy him some paint, we can help him fix their roof, we can give him a low interest loan, we can give forgivable loan, we can do some grants. We can do all kinds of creative things like that to help subsidize and promote those kinds of activities that we want to see. And now we're mobilizing citizens to help clean up the city, we're not just trying to do it all as the city ourselves. Um, and I have one more slide, my final conclusion was that, you know, while this discussion is focused on some of the difficulties facing the city, it's important to remind ourselves that Helena and West Helena are still great places with unique assets and amazing potential. And if anybody wants to contact me, my email address is on the bottom there. This time I opened it up for questions and discussion.
Working with you at the present, is that right?
No, I'm doing this as a private person. As an individual.
Uh, because this is quite a bit to digest.
Yeah.
Time I've seen this. We might, Mr. Mayor, per- perhaps appoint a committee to work with this gentleman to see, to look into this. If you want to, uh.
I think we, we, we but the the mayor and the city council, he brought this to us, I think we should work with him on this. Most of these are, you know, we should get together with him and try to help enforce the things that he's pointing out here. Uh, because what you, a committee go do the same thing we're going to do, we can take action faster than the committee can. So I think that I'm hoping that you all would get on board and work together and try to see what can we do to help him. Because this is, a lot of these have been abandoned buildings, you see, uh, I had, I was able to see it turning about Main Street. Um, you know, the, some of these businesses, um, yes, music store, a lot of these, what are we going to do with those? The code enforcement will contact these owners to see, we should get involved. To s- we have to show the city that we're more involved instead of getting a committee together, we need to do this. And if we need some help, then we can go outside, but I'm, I'm sure we're going to work with you on this.
Great, and if you got, obviously if you want to discuss with, without me here, that's fine too, I'll just excuse myself if that's appropriate, just let me know.
You go to the implementation page. Uh, there's a chart and it says the department of code enforcement should be structured like the police or fire. And if I'm looking at this correctly, you know, correct me, so the top graph or chart is basically what we've appropriated so far right now.
Correct, that's a snapshot from this year's budget for code enforcement, it has three people, it has, um their, 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 their base pay is roughly thirty thousand dollars, twenty eight thousand dollars. And then the chart that's below it is just uh, just a draft, you know, what I just put together.
And that would be what we need to appropriate in order for us to really get all wrote.
Sure, yeah, yeah, I think that's, you know, I mean, that's also an estimate, we'd have to actually talk about do we need all those positions, how many, maybe we want to start with a few, maybe we want to, don't, don't want to do the, you know, full blown amount. And then making sure that we're going to pay people appropriately, so if we do have a separate legal person, obviously we need to make sure that that pay is competitive. You know, uh, I would, it's, it's very flexible. But just to have something to be like, the ballpark is right around six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollars.
Explain to me, okay, so let's say you have a property, it's, it's looks terrible and so now the code op- code enforcement officer, he goes out there, it's a terrible property. Kind of walk me through the process, he then takes it to who?
Well, the initial ordinance we have now, what would happen, they would send a letter to the person, they would get the information either from uh the Phillips County Assessors Office or they would, they would go on to the website, drawing a blank, what's the name of the website, uh, yeah, actdata scalp dot com. And they would see who the registered landlord is. And on our current ordinance, they have thirty days to respond. And we have thirty days to respond, they can either start working and they can ask for additional time. If the person is showing good faith in doing it, code enforcement typically would give an extension of time to continue to work. If they're not, then the next phase would be to contact the city attorney's office for the purpose of drafting an ordinance relating to condemnation. Uh, we still have a, a list of condenate properties that have been condemned, that have not been torn down. That's another factor that we hadn't discussed tonight, because the, the, over the history, the many structures that the body, this body has condemned. But they haven't been torn down by the city, but nation between Public Works. The city paid for the tear down, now. We have three people
Okay.
Who have been waiting for two years for their property to be torn down, when they got the letter, they said, what's the cost, city? And they paid the city a check, the city never torn down. And those miners are still in the city coffers. Cover, they were meeting today about those three people and said, what can we do, I said, well, the mayor's office sanitation, they go ahead and raising those structures. And some people say, hey, I just did, fine, if you can tear down, say, I can, you can get it done cheaper than me, I'll pay you.
Okay.
And we, we've had numerous people doing it, and we have three that that paid, it's been excess of a year ago, almost two years ago. Uh, to tear the property down, but they haven't been torn down. Now, what typically is supposed to happen after this body does the condemnation. Then the sanitation department and the code enforcement coordinator, we're going to go, we're going to raise the structure, tear it down on the day. And they're supposed to get all the documents together for us, how many, how many hours it took, what manpower it took, how much equipment it could, what were the actual costs of the city? And then they would come back to the city council and we would do a lien. We haven't done any liens because that part has been missing. Because when I said that part has been missing, what's missing is the they've torn down, sanitation department has torn down some structures. But there's no, there's no documentation as to how many, how much manpower we use, how many hours it took, what machinery it took. How much that machinery it cost us, et cetera, I would say cost us, cost the city, and so that's what's been missing. And so that's how the process works, because then a lien would be placed, this body would have a hearing. Place a lien on the property and we'll go on that tax bill. And so it the following year on the taxes. And that's how the city would recoup its money, and once you get the lien, it goes on the taxes and they will start paying uh, when they pay their taxes to the collector, then the city would start recouping its money.
Okay.
And so everything that we would do this year would go on next year's tax bill. Yes, sir, my son, come on.
You mentioned earlier that we have the city, Helena, West Helena, has approximately a thousand uh, properties.
That's so far, that's, that, that didn't, that didn't pull over the inventory, that's so far what they've gone through. Is what they told me.
We've got approximately a thousand pieces of property, uh, how many of those? Are the people paying the property taxes? Are they paying taxes on those properties?
I haven't checked to see if they're paying taxes on the property. I don't know, I haven't checked to see if they're paying a tax on property, right now, they're just trying to get the inventory so that they can begin to
I mean, if you put a lien against a property and they're not paying the taxes, they wouldn't care what kind of lien you got against it.
Well, eventually what happens is someone may
They're thinking that these property owners
Excuse me, many times a third party will purchase it at the tax sale. And that's how you would eventually get your money.
Okay, and that, that process takes five years.
That process takes five years.
Maybe that's kind of, maybe
And that's an Arkansas thing.
But that might be kind of what the code enforcement officers are somewhere in that process, it's like it needs to be a little bit more bite somewhere, like you know, there's some type of uh penalty or consequence, if you, if, if, if you've got some property and it's jumped up and you're not mowing the grass and stuff, then something needs to happen. They get, they get fined. Is it for, is it enforced? Yeah, it's important, I mean, what Okay, yeah, I'm not blaming anybody, I'm just saying.
The reason why I asked the judge was to make a very specific point, when we were doing the budget, then when the district court judge came, I said, how many citations have you done since you've been judged? He said, one. And that's, that's the point I was trying to make. Because there's this false narrative that the, the city attorney's office is not, not doing things about the code enforcement. About, but the information has to come to the code, I'm at the end of the line. It's after everybody else has done their job, it gets to me. And so the issue is, we always have, the, 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 the city has always had the capacity to issue a citation, them come before court. And I'm the city attorney in four different cities, in Maryland, we prosecute them regularly. People come in, the code enforcement does it, and we, we just come bring them to court, prosecute them. And uh, they get fined and they go through and the judge keeps bringing them back monthly, seeing what's taking along so long. They tear out a property and then, and then they're in the same judge, same judge, same city attorney, but with a different approach. And so it's, it's one of those things that I'm not trying to cast this personally anymore, I'm trying to show precisely how the process works. City attorneys at the end of the line. And then we either, I'm bringing this to the city council or to the judge. And so that's why we need coordination from the mayor's office, sanitation department, everybody involved to, to get it down the line so we can get it done.
Yeah.
And so I'm willing to help, I told the mayor, I've tried in the past to meet with code enforcement, I used to meet with code enforcement weekly uh, years ago, but what happens is when people, code enforcement have a large job, Mr. Erickson said that, and I agree with it. Because what happens is today it may be buildings, tomorrow it may be dogs, it may be a rooster. And we had last year had to chase down a rooster that was in somebody's house, uh, what the city did, code enforcement did. And you have all types of things in common, code enforcement be called about cars, about everything. Food trucks, and so it isn't just these buildings, their job is much larger than just these buildings. And I think that many times we underappreciate that and understanding that it can be a different thing every day for code enforcement. And so I agree that there probably needs to be more code enforcement officers and the scope is different, and we want to do a lot of things. While our population has dropped, our acreage has not. This is a vast city.
True.
And uh, it used to be uh far more citizens and all those pieces of property are still here. And so we have to develop a means of, of, of having those raised that we can, repaired that can, uh, sold that can, and one of the problems, Officer Mimi Montoya, was one thing that she found. There's another nuance that's just frustrating. Third part is from all over the nation are buying property here. Because it's so cheap. And then by the time you send them a letter, what they do is they put it up for sale and so, and so we start the process over. And so they're buying property because somebody probably sell it for five hundred dollars, thousand dollars, fifteen hundred dollars, they've been torn down, I mean, they've been burned. Right, that's, that's what, that's, yes, that's what the assessors office. But now that they don't have the, now the new part, it didn't have the notice, you got to send a notice to the next person. And so we had two or three groups that's buying these properties that they can find that burned out for five hundred dollars. So that's eight hundred dollars, thousand dollars, and that, that's selling them because they could turn around and make, hey, I can make a thousand dollars, I'll just burn out a piece of property real quick. And so you have this low, low, low level of flipping, as, as you said, Dr. Miller. Where people are buying lots for five hundred dollars that would burn out stores to sell them for eight hundred dollars. And they're buying them in, in groups, and so that's one of the frustrations Officer Mimi Montoya always expressed to me, because she, she started the process and could get it finished on several groups because of, of that very thing.
That, that's one thing that the vacancy tax, the vacant property tax is meant to help with that. Because if you have to, if, if the, if the, if the code is written so that you know, a vacant residence, um, I'm trying to remember in some other codes that I read, they would say like okay, a residential property, you're going to, for one year, it's going to be four hundred dollars, right? You just have to pay that, you're not going to be here doing anything, that's just, that's like the endowment you have to give the city to, to uh deal with it. Next year it's, it doubles, they would say the eight hundred, sixteen hundred, thirty two hundred dollars, and so it shuts that down. And then secondly, if you, if people say like, well, I'm just not going to pay it, but then you put a lien and it goes on the tax bill, then it encumbers that property. And so it's not going to be able to go through the washing machine over and over and over again like that. Because a five hundred dollar property might have six thousand dollars in, in encumbrances. And that would, that would stop that. I, and I, I think it would.
Do you think maybe, this is a question for everybody, you think also, uh, I've been thinking about this, a possible moneymaker or, or income revenue would be, I know we, I know the city tears down, um structures, but for some people, it's a little bit price inhibited, so if it was a little bit less. You know, it might be an incentive to and then, but I don't know if we had the pan manpower to do that, but because some people do legitimately want to tear down a structure and they would pay the city. Um, especially if it was at an affordable cost.
Yeah, then you just got to be careful not to undercut private business that, you know, is doing that. Um, right, because if like Joe's demo company is charging you five thousand dollars to take you out of a house and the city shows up and says we'll do it for four. Joe's going to be in this microphone here and
Stories, people told me that the city is much higher than, and that, but I haven't verified that.
I think the city is very reasonable, because
Okay.
If we can't, if we can't tear it down, we will normally find, well, I haven't, I mean, but when I was on the council, we would normally find somebody. Um, a couple, they would be cheaper like four, five hundred dollars, just tear a house down. One of the things that, that last year's budget had seventy five thousand dollars for demolition, I don't, I don't recall what this year's budget has in it. But I believe it's the same, but part of the thing we have to do, once we identify the properties. The issue we've had in the past with the cut, with the tearing down properties, almost every property was torn down for four thousand nine hundred some dollars. Right below the mayor's spending limit. And I don't think the city will see the buying for its books, and what I mean by that is if you had a large amount of properties that you were bidding and you said you're going to get the whole seventy five thousand dollars. How much would take to tear down all these properties, we probably can get more property tore down for the same amount of money. And that's part of the issue about going through the bidding process and letting people know just how many we have, because I think whatever said, whatever money we have. We need to use it all in the best way that we can, because you have limited resources as you're tearing down the properties.
And so as they're tearing it down, I'm, I'm asking it quick, but as they're tearing it down, are they also paying a fee to the city for the tear down? Who, I mean, whoever, I mean, I know some of them were not going to have there to recoup, but
Urbanization license, is that what you're going?
Yeah, or just, let's say, I was going to say Joe Schmo, but I can't say Joe Schmo, but let's say Bob, he's, he's wanting to tear down a property. And so the city says, okay, we'll, we'll, we're tearing down, is Bob then paying a fee to the city?
Say, you're tearing down a property for me.
Yeah.
If you're tearing down a property for me, then I can go save the city, I, I want this torn down, we do it for what the city want. And they would pay the city, you have three of them on the books right now that have done that.
Yeah.
And but the city hadn't torn down the property at this time.
Yeah, it's like that could be an, an income, that could be a revenue. That's, um, yeah. So, I mean, we, so we So, we don't hire somebody to, we will receive some, some benefits from it. Um, and another thing, when you tear these houses, you have to have a plan to put a structure or something back up. Because we, now we have a housing problem, and we can't get anybody to move here with, without a house to live in, people don't want to stay in apartment, so we need to come up with a plan on, once we tear them down, can we build a, a single family home? Yeah, so, so you have to give people something, because if, if you have, a lot of the problems we have, a lot of these lots are abandoned. The city has to take on responsibility for cutting
Because if you have, a lot of the problems we have, a lot of these lots are abandoned. The city has to take on responsibility for cutting these lots, a lot of lots that we. A housing was torn down. The city is responsible for cutting these lots and still trying to build the people. To and and we don't we don't we don't get sense when we don't build them, they don't pay. We have to pay those contracts to cut the grass and stuff. So it's we we have to find ways. Um like I said earlier, we'll we'll try to get a community cleanup with our fraternities and sororities and people have a spring cleanup day. So we can get our city back on the right track. Because housing is a very big part of people not coming to hell.
Yeah.
It's a very big part. And I mean, when they when they come to hell, they're looking for a decent house and a decent neighborhood. And that's some of the problem.
Now, the mayor threw out that real cavalier of it. He had been talking to me about the spring cleanup day. And uh the spring cleanup day, what what we were discussing and want to go forward with. Is the city council set a day for spring cleanup? We coordinated with the local local community charities, the fraternity, the sorority, the churches. This is the day we're going to clean the city.
Okay.
And all of you all, which your wars coordinate within your wars as to this is a spring cleaning day. Uh we may get some T-shirts or whatever, and all of us come in and just get together hands on. And let's have a day where the community comes out and cleans the city. We may do parks, we may do ditches, alleys or whatever. But a collaborative effort between the city and the citizens and all the the charities, charitable organizations, cities, turners, sororities, churches, and everyone. To coordinate a cleanup day. And so that was the idea that he and I discussed and something that that we wanted to put before this body so that all of us can buy in. Because what we want as a citizen, we all want the city to be clean.
Yes.
And I think that all of us have to take ownership in cleaning the city.
Yeah.
And it's one of those things that if you all will work together, this body along with our community organizations. I think that that it would be something that we all can work towards.
A community organization.
Yes, sir.
That's what I was talking about, forming a committee or an organization to look into all of this and, you know.
Right. But on the cleanup day, what we were saying is that you all, let's elect officials.
But I mean.
That we say we're going to have a city cleanup day. And let's contact all these local fraternities, sororities, boys and girls club. All the local schools, the churches, and all the other civic organizations, whether it's the Kiwanis or or the Rotarians or whomever. And say, hey, we want to do a cleanup day and all of us work together.
Yeah.
And we want a day where we can do a T-shirt or whatever, and everybody come together. We can have some food cooking on some sometimes, some balloons over here. Most things is have a day where we show that we love this city.
That's right. I think I think that's how it's right on track too. We're we're having the issue that. Um you know, like other cities who have been depopulated like Detroit. You know, my cousin, she lives in Detroit, and it was the same thing. The population went down. You have a lot of these abandoned houses, abandoned properties. And and now, you know, Detroit is on the upswing again. But they but they consciously made a plan. Like like Mr. Amos was talking about, and they put the plan together. And they but they did had to tear down a lot of structures and clean and do a lot of cleaning. Because you got to clean it up first before to make it a Tyson. So I think we're definitely on the right track.
At some point, we we just have to come together and just do it. Because once we start, see, when I was on the city council, I was always arguing about the parks, the ditches, and the alleys, you know. When when you when you go outside your house and you see a burnt structure, you see alleys overgrown. You see, when you go right here and go down open, you see how the the mud is on the side of the road. Nobody scraped it off so the water can get to the drainage. Those are things. You look at the center greens, look at how dirt just packed it. We we don't have enough love in this community. We we care about what we what we care about. And I think we have to start caring about just hell in the period. Put your politics aside and just care about this place. Because people, when once people seen. And you and I getting along, trying to turn hell around, the hospital get better, the schools to get better, the town to get better, the colleges get together. We have so many different agendas that we're not focused on that one item, and that's making hell in the beautiful and clean. You know, we 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 need to focus on it. No one's going to come here. When you get straight off the bridge, you got these structures to your right. Come down for a night, get to the hospital, you look to your left, there's signs just broke down. You know, there there's no light. We have to start. Yeah, I I understand what you're saying. Yeah, well, it's it's but I, yeah, it is. But I want you to take that same approach and let me finish. I I I gave you a little time to talk, and I I kind of wish you just, you know, respect and let me get this get this going. I mean, it's been there for years. When I was sitting beside you. It uh we'll figure it out later, but that's part of the issue that we have, a lack of respect for individuals. I would like to see that change because the same property has been here for ten and fifteen years or better, twenty years. Uh you look at some of our property. If you if you when you go out this door, look right over here, down, right here behind you. We just put a fence up after with twenty fifteen years. So we need to start taking care of our own space. People will be, when people come back to hell to build their houses, know they build houses away from everybody because they can take care of their own structure. They can make sure their property good. But when you before you get to the house, like, dang, I'm going through a war zone. We have to start taking care of our own property and holding other people accountable. But we have to start first. You can't say, tear your structure down and our property looks horrible. We got it. We got to start. We got to be the good stewardess first and take care of our property. Street sanitation, um Mr. Collins, they're moving cars and stuff out of the way. To make sure that our property looks good. Because when you come around the curve going by the corner market, you run right into the city. You see dumpsters. We're we're working on our own property first so that we can show the citizen that we can take our own stuff, then we can go out and help them. But first, we need to make the city of Helena West Hill look good by taking care of our property. So you can't talk about the house on Sixth Street when you got a when you got a house or you got a structure on Columbia that hadn't been torn down and need to be condemned as well. So we have to look at what even the property I own, I make sure I cut it. So if you have property before you start talking about other issues in the city. Take care of your property first as a homeowner, as a citizen. So don't throw shade at the city and other individuals when you're not taking care of your own property. So we can talk about Sixth Street, Tenth Street, let's talk about the streets that we own around this table and get it cleaned up together. Mr. Ekson, I think you have anything else for us?
Just love to keep the conversation going. And if you ever want, you know, want me to come back for any reason, I'd love to do so.
The 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 doors open anytime we we're going to keep revisiting this until we we're going to work with you and you're going to work with us to get our city in the right direction.
Yes, sir. Just to piggyback on Joe, I and and I can't say I can't, I don't call myself trying to speak for you. But but I do think that a special committee or a special group targeted towards this. That could be, that could also include community people so that way we can get the community buy in. You know, I think would be helpful.
Mr. Miller, if there's something that the body wants to do, I'm fine with that. But, you know, the body can decide. Yes, I mean, I I'll I'll support it. If you all get it together, I'd be happy to support it.
Yes, sir.
And uh again, uh I I want to say it again. If you have property, we have we have people that have property around this table. Before we talk about the city, let's get our your property cleaned up. When you show pictures of other people's property, clean yours up first, and then we'll follow behind you. So don't throw our hints about other people's property. When you ride down, but but right here by the Dollar General, you look to your you you're right. You'll see abandoned structure, we go and buy new light church.
Wait a minute now, I think you are being very shady. Because in all transparency, I'm one of those people with that blighted property. And I don't like to see blighted property, but here's the thing. I think that the suggestion that was made earlier, I think really would be helpful. Because I know the price point, I was quoted to have, I I mean, I have houses you could literally blow on and they would fall down.
Right, right.
I was quoted like twenty seven hundred just to tear it down, four thousand to have it hauled off. And I had, that was just for two houses. So we're talking eight thousand dollars right there. So I'm just saying.
I'm 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 be real tender, but uh I I didn't know you had any property. But I was being, and I hated cutting, but I was cutting it somebody else.
You know, I I love that crap down there.
I'm gonna tell you what I I I wouldn't, I wouldn't talk about you. I'm talking about the guy at the table or someone on Sixth Street when he got property he hadn't maintained. And we want to get him to maintain his property because I have to maintain my, so when you talk, and and I'm sorry, but I'm I'm sorry. But everybody, no one is exempt because I got property. That's why people take care of their property. Because uh I want and 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 it's just.
I have I have a question. Thank you, Mr. Ekerson, for your presentation.
Okay.
Uh we will continue to try to work on it. I I have one question because I keep getting messages just about the 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 board order and what is the status?
The the chief of staff have has a couple of things that he's going to bring to the body, and he's going to address that issue. Uh Mr. Mr. James Allen, if you will.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council, Mr. Mayor, City Attorney, Treasurer, and Acting Clerk. Uh you should have two documents on your desk. One of them is a survey by Smith and Wyland. And it's for the purpose of monitoring the, what they call the west tank of the Helena Municipal Water and Sewer System. That tank stands behind Wall School. You've been showing pictures previously of the, yes, sir. You've been showing pictures previously of the legs eroding, two legs, that there's a lot of erosion around them. Uh part of those presentations didn't mention there were six legs on it instead of just four. Uh and this engineering report shows as of twenty twenty one, and and the mayor has empowered them to do one in twenty twenty three. There have been no movement, even though there is erosion. So the tank is stable, it's not moving, it's not like going to tilt or fall over and fall down the hill. Uh so that's what the purpose of the report is, and you'll get an updated report soon. You also have a a general agreement on your table from Smith and Wyland. Uh you approve the mayor doing that, and that's just a document showing you what he's done and what the limitations of the agreement. Uh is and are in terms of Smith and Wyland going out for these various projects, whether it's the ditch or. Uh downward street or the tank behind Wall School or other things that the the city would need to be done. Then you have a Google Earth map, and this Google Earth map shows Wall School. As well as the Eliza Miller School on the Wall School campus. In one area. And then there's a water tank at the bottom, the way I'm holding where Google Earth is at the bottom. That little dot is the water tank. That's the same water tank I'm talking to you about, but I'm showing you this picture for a different purpose. Down at the bottom of that V is Word Street. If you turn it this way, Word Street would be at the bottom. That little street there. Uh and I know you have to turn it to see it, but that's Word Street. The elevation at Wall School and our water tank is about sixty feet higher than Word Street. So we have water coming into a V like this and shooting downward street. And the proportion of that water has been sped up by the drainage at Wall School. Um now, what's to be done about that, we don't quite know yet. The engineer is trying to figure out a plan to slow the water down. If we can't slow the water down, you may have to relocate some people. If it's not cost effective to slow the water down. Uh and certainly we'll be talking with our school superintendent who we have in our audience, our board president. Uh because this water has always come downward street. But when we built the Eliza Miller building, we took a soccer field that was grass that absorbed water and drained slowly. And covered it with a building with a roof, a parking lot and sidewalk that does not absorb water, and their water is channelled. That water is going down that hill. And uh Word Street, we sent you pictures of Word Street. Word Street is in a mess. And so we got to see what we can do. So just look for a report from the engineer as to some of the options. Some might be inexpensive, but the real solution, this ten acres of land, you could buy that. And you could do like we did at at Candy Creek. You can build a dam where the water comes into the dam and slowly slowly releases. If you decide to do that, uh but that could be quite costly.
Slow the water down?
Not enough. Not enough. Uh the ditch is getting deeper, it's getting sharper and all that. That that water is coming at a pretty good pace. And it's because the the rise overrun is about five degrees, I think is what they call it. So it's like this, it's pretty steep. It's good for a roof.
So what are the engineers predicting that we do? What do they?
He hasn't said just yet. He says he's going to give you several options. But yeah, but there's not going to be a cheap option. They are going to be very expensive. And at this point, if my memory is correct, you have four houses, two of them occupied. On Word Street at this time.
So they're working on this one. What about this tank now? We can get that fixed, can't we?
We'll get it fixed, but he's also going to give you another analysis of the weather, the tank is leaning. The tank is not dead and leaning, and the tank is basically secure. Uh but we do need to monitor it and do some erosion control around the tank.
Close is Word Street to, you know, um when you're leaving JF Wall School and you make that left. Uh no, it's like when you come around past that daycare and um. The church uh the church is on top of the hill. Is it Stringtown Road? Is how close is it to that area?
Uh not really close at all. Well, it it could connect if you if you took Word Street. You put your finger at the bottom here, right? Word Street would literally come up right beside Wall School. Right where you drive down the hill and you go around and drop the kids off, that could be Word Street.
The reason I'm asking, I had uh some people in my ward who I I went to go look at their house.
Right.
And the way you're describing it, it's like that water is coming down, and they're trying to figure out why are their ditches so high? And the water is so forceful, and that's just what made me think about that.
Right.
And it's actually to a point where it's eroding their yard, and there's a a a light pole that's kind of iffy. Yes, it's a lot going on.
Was that on Word on on Stringtown Road?
That's that's on Stringtown Road.
Yeah.
Where Mother's Goose is.
Yeah, it's on that same.
Yeah, Mother Goose and Ramsey Street and those over there. So we probably have similar issues over there.
So we may have some.
But on Word Street, you got exposed water line, two inch water line, that certainly if it burst, it could. It could drain that tank pretty quickly.
You have to go always back to the back of Valley Drive to get to Word Street. Because it's this, it literally is is behind the the school. I had to go and look for it myself, but you.
They got Grand that dead ends at Wall School and one section that has not been overrun with water. And then Word Street also in banks with uh the Wall School, well, almost the Wall School property. It's 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 ten acres that's separated.
But Valley on the other end, not being going to us calm.
Valley on the end where my granddad lived.
Yeah, instead of you turning left at the first back to Middle High Street, you keep on going back farther.
Yeah.
And then Word is always at the back to make a left and come back, and the school is up on here. So actually, if you're dropping the kids off at Eliza Miller's, you look down to Word Street.
Yeah, you look down the grain.
You look down the grain. Word Street is behind.
Word Street is going to be over to the other side.
But if anyone, if anybody wants to take the tour, I'm I'm I've been in the touring mood.
We do have a sewer lift station at the end of Valley Drive, right near Word, that they got one of those fancy pumps that we're renting on.
So if you if you if you're not aware of where it is, I, Miss Miller, you know, you don't roll with me, it's I'm more happy, I'm more even happy to take you with us. To show you this this state of this state of here.
So if you want to see uh the street, I'd be happy to take you. Let's just see some pumps. So if you wanna see uh the street, I'd be happy to take you. Let's just see some pump stations, sewer pumps, everything.
When should we get the, when should we get the results uh from the engineers on this?
The mayor just signed the contract with him today. So let's say within about thirty days or so, I I'd imagine.
This this tank is not this tank here, is it?
It is.
That's the same tank.
It is that same. And and the water from that hill is eroding around that tank too.
That's what's caused, is that what is, is that what has caused the leg to be sticking up there?
Erosion has, yes. Rainwater eroding around the top.
Okay, and so the solution that they're going to present to us will be to solve this entire problem.
No.
No?
We're gonna, we're we're gonna fix around the tower because you got to. You're gonna put rocks and dirt and other stuff around the tower. But the solution to stopping the flooding on Word Street is a whole different.
So that's coming from the the hill itself.
That ten acres of ground, that's channeling right down Word Street. Word Street is operating like a ditch.
And the engineers.
Putting rocks at different levels are probably what they're going to predict, aren't they?
That may be one of the solutions he'll he'll suggest. I'm gonna let the engineer tell us. It's gonna be one of the solutions.
The engineer also informed us today is not, it's not, the tank has been overflowing. That's part of the erosion as well. He told us that the tank, they had in previous years, they've been letting the tank overflow. And that's was, and the leg is not sticking up. He says still, everything is still good. Just wanna fill that spot in. But the leg is not sticking up like it like it's gonna roll, the tank gonna roll off the hill. That's not gonna happen because make that clear to you. Um we are trying to do everything we can and uh excuse me, mister. Yeah, he's 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 an engineer. He's looking at it. Uh he's gonna give us a plan, he's gonna fix it. But he did tell us today that um those issues we just talked about. Um the tank overfilling has caused that issue. Uh and it's not, and it's not gonna roll down the hill to kill that, so. No, sir.
I thought we did.
It got denied.
We received a letter, I think the draw ahead of the last council, we received a letter that the application that the the mayor submitted, where we were gonna get a grant, it was denied. The former mayor, Mayor Smith, that was denied. It was not in this funding cycle.
And 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 let me, I'm not correcting myself, I'm 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 amplifying what I see. This has a report on it, Mr. Miller and everybody, and it's showing you the change in total inch. And on one of them is point, is zero point one, two parts of an inch, whatever that is. But he basically said there's nothing and the rest of them show zero in the change. And he said that zero point one, two could be from um changes in the ground due to weather. But the tank itself has not moved. And so you got zero, zero, zero or zero point one, two, zero in terms of the movement.
The tank hasn't moved, but the ground has.
That's right. That's right. That's where you are on the tank. So that's the three, that's three of the things. And I I know they wanted me to address the boil order. Um I I I do this kinda quickly, so if I cut across the field and you need me to explain it better, just ask me to and I I go back. But the boil order is a precautionary boil order. That is that we we self-reported it and we did that because the tank level, which is a sixty eight to seventy foot tank, fell below ten, ten feet. It fell below ten feet, I believe it was the second day of the ice storm. Uh part of what happened there was that the uh fuses, which many people don't know that, but the fuses on the light poles that they used to disconnect to cut the lights off when they're gonna work on them, they blew right over our well number nine. Uh and the motor in the well burned up. So it wasn't pumping in water. And so because well number seven, eight and ten are pumping insufficient amounts of water. Uh we use more water than was going into the tank, so it dropped precipitously till it got down below the ten feet. Um so we made the report. Uh the the mayor and the water manager and the the plant operator quickly got into action and called uh Jones Hydro, that's the company you all authorized uh the mayor to spend eighty thousand dollars with working on this tank. They came over to do what they were already planning to do was to put a new submersible pump in there. It's down five hundred feet. And so they got like ten sticks of fifty feet each that they had to take out. While they were taking it out, somebody was going to Memphis to buy the motor because they found one in Arizona, one in Texas, one in Memphis. So they went to Memphis and got the motor. I don't know what that's gonna cost you because they didn't tell us. But we got the motor and then about, they was out there from like seven in the morning to, it was after ten when we left, wasn't it, man? After ten at night when we left. Um we had called in, I called myself, the emergency alert for the power company to come and fix the fuses. Whoever took the call, put it in as a power outage. And entity reported it as concluded because the power was back on. But that was incorrect. That was not what's happening. So we eventually made contact with a guy by the name of Brock and Brock sent uh some guys out there and then they changed the fuses after nine o'clock. And they changed the fuses, just happened to coordinate with about the time the guys were finishing putting the pumps in. Uh and so they wired up the pumps. The pump was getting a hundred and twenty volts. But they must have one, four hundred and eighty volts in order to function properly. So we got that. And so then the pump starts pumping about four hundred gallons per minute. Now ideally, these pumps will do eight to nine hundred gallons per minute, each pump. Uh but the well nine is doing a little over four hundred, maybe five hundred gallons a minute. And the others together take it up to about twelve hundred gallons a minute. Um which is pretty pathetic, but it's sufficient to fill our tank. The tank this morning was at sixty five feet. So we've gone from nine feet up to sixty five. So once it crosses forty feet, you can take your nine samples that you have to take to send to the health department. And we took those this morning and they were sent to the health department. And as soon as we get a report from the health department, uh if those samples do not have uh coliform or E. coli in them, then the boil order will be lifted. So we're waiting on the results of that that sample. We typically have to do two samples on two days back to back. Uh but because this was a precautionary boil order, we were told today that the one sample today was all we have to do. And so once we get the results back, then hopefully we'll be off the boil order. That could be tonight, that could be next week. We wait on the health department. They running the test. And I could test it, you know, and we'd be through with it, but they don't let me test. Uh I'm telling you that the water is all right. Um so but that's where we are now. The 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 ice storm was a big part of the problem. But also part of our problem is this battle that we're having internally as to how much overtime we allow the plant manager, the plant operator to have to work on these issues. And we haven't found a happy medium. Um the two weeks before this happened, there was twenty hours each week of overtime. Uh and then we still had this problem. At one point last year, that was a hundred and twenty hours of overtime, meaning the guy worked a hundred hours a week. And and we just don't know what's required, certainly not blaming him of of itself. He's the only employee. And and he was frustrated with the mayor and 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 with me about pointing that out, but he, I mean, he's the only employee that handles our our water. We got one plant operator in West Elm, one plant operator in Hilton. And and I mean, you know, since the only one is just one, uh we can't help that. Uh but that's part of the concern that we have in terms of how do you manage overtime to make sure you don't have boil order. So what now?
That hundred hours was in a week.
According to the time sheet, well, it was a hundred and twenty hours in two week time period.
When did he sleep? You don't have to answer that question.
I I understand. Uh cause, cause, cause I, cause, cause I, I say this with every degree of seriousness in my body. That I don't know how all this happens and I'm not trying to uh cast any aspersions on the employee. Uh I I believe he feels though he's, he he has to do it this way and that's what he's doing. He's basically saying your equipment ain't no good. If you fix your equipment, you won't need me all these out. That's essentially what he's saying. And so we're trying to find the balance in there. But we got four pumps that none of them are sufficient. I mean, it's like having a a a car on four flats almost. You know, they got, they got some air, but not enough. Yeah, so you ready to run, but you can't run fast, can't drive fast like, you know, these folks that drive Lexuses sitting around the table.
But that's been going off for. That's a twenty or thirty year problems, it's kinda just caught up with us.
The wells are over fifty years old. And one of the solutions is to go down the five hundred feet. And they call it sonar blast, but basically put dynamite in the hole and blow it open. And see if that will create more water, more water flow. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We just hadn't, he hadn't done it yet.
Well, they haven't done.
He, they hadn't done. Now Chris and I could go out there with stick of dynamite, we do. That been done, but we waiting on the people who know what they're doing to do. But if that doesn't work, we gotta start looking for a location and money to drill a whole new well. And the 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 rough estimate is sixty, seven hundred thousand.
Isn't it also a lot of sediment in our tanks too that needs to be? And we just.
And well, we're just talking about the well right now, but in the well, there may be sediment, iron, calcium, all that kinda buildup. That's keeping it from pumping at the level that it ought to pump at. Uh but so we don't, we don't know until they they do. Uh Jones Hydro out of Stuttgart, Arkansas. Jeff Jones and four other people showed up the other night. They didn't tell me their name, but they were working, so I stayed out the way. But it's Jones Hydro out of Stuttgart. On the other hand, I wanna commend the the young man, I'm not calling his name this time either, for doing the work that he's doing. Cause he has to be self motivated. He has to get up at two in the morning, sometimes four in the morning. The mayor called me at three fifty five A M. the other day about this water thing. Uh you know, I was trying to sleep, but it it happens. And 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 he was up, the 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 water guy on his own. He he's been calling the water manager who lives in Maryland, but he does report to work here every day to get permission to go out because it's overtime. And what we basically cleared him up during this time period, just do what it takes to get these citizens good water. Get these, everybody off the boil order because it's costing us lost tax revenue, a- among other things. Uh people can't sell fountain drinks uh and all those kinds of problems that it create when you have a boil order. And nobody likes that. Nobody. We get called from businesses as well as residential people with concerns about the boil order.
Do we need another person?
To cut overtime probably, but that wouldn't solve the mechanical problems that we got. That's why we're trying to reach this this medium between whether it's the the problems, because they're saying our filters are bad. That's what's filtering the water, uh which slows down the rate which we, once you get the water in, you clean it up. It slows the rate that you can get it to the tank. And just as a quick lesson on water, we got the tank, not, we got the plant behind the West Elm City Hall, West Elm uh water company. When the water leaves there, it goes first to all the houses. It's what they call the system. So the water feeds out like octopus legs to the houses and all of the businesses and all of that. Once those are full and then we put more water in, it's leaking. It backfills the field of the tank. The tank is the last thing to fill. And that's what creates the water pressure. So the further you are from the tenth street tank, the lower your water pressure is when you have a problem. Because you're so far away from the pressure. So if you're living out toward uh where Alderman Ethely lives, if you're living down on the end of West Elm where my my mother lives, if you're on Jane Street, out that way, your water pressure will quickly decline because you saw for, you you are so far from the tank. Helena set up a little differently than that, in that Helena has, I think, four tanks uh that are all feed different things, but Reservoir Hill feeds all of the tanks. So they send it up to Reservoir Hill, then from where Reservoir Hill, it comes down and it goes over here, they call it Hellendale Booster Station. That boosts the water up to this tower by Wall School. It gravity feeds to what they call the south tank, which is on top of the hill at Helena Crossing. And that goes from Reservoir Hill to Helena Crossing, that's the south tank. From the tank there behind Wall Schools, they call the west tank. The water is forced out by gravity to the industrial park to fill that tank. So that's how, but it all starts at Reservoir Hill. And all the water is filtered down here on Chickasaw Street at the plant and then it goes through those various pipes.
The plant runs it up to Reservoir Hill.
It runs it to the house at first, it fills the system. And then it backs up to Reservoir Hill and then Reservoir Hill sends it out to the other three tanks. And then there's a booster station at Hellendale, right there in the road by that that monument. I don't know what you call it. You know, I'm talking about that monument in the middle of the road. Father. I see, I I knew Joe Newt. That's why I was asking. So so right there, there's a booster station there. A booster station is what you use to push water up into the tank. The lift station lifts the opposite stuff up so it can gravity flow out to our sewer pumps. I I I didn't, I didn't mean to give y'all a full water lesson, but that's, that's, that's what we got. Water uh for for those young men and women who are who are watching, water is a great opportunity for people to make money. Uh these people charge, you know. They charge rocket science prices to do what they're doing. I would say Dr. Lloyd, but Dr. Lloyd don't make this kinda money. They 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 don't, so you know, my own job, make some money, get involved in waters or or sanitation, it pays well too. But I hope I've answered your question. If you got another question, I'd be glad to address that.
So is there anything we need to do? I mean, moving forward, is this information first to carry?
No, no, sir. We have one last thing for the agenda invoice for fifteen thousand dollars for Thompson Mechanics. Machinery, I'm sorry, for the work on the dozer at the landfill.
Yeah, I think was that's the most, did not include that. You you had to. No, he did the six thousand. And you all, you all discussed it, but Mr. Smith's motion was only for the six thousand, eight thousand invoice. You ought to discuss Thompson. Uh that's the equipment at the landfill, it's fifteen thousand by itself.
You have to put in the motion.
All right, we got a motion second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you call the row?
Um, Mr. St. Columbia. Don Miller. Maxine Miller. Don Ethely. Davidson Harris are absent.
Motion passes. Is there anything else that somebody has? All right, before we end the meeting, we wanna tell uh one of our favorite sorority sisters, happy birthday. So we wish you many more. We're so glad that sorority came out. And we invite any fraternity, sorority, any group that wants to come to the city council, we're open. And we just thank you all for the great work that you all do in our community. Keep up the good work, ladies. You have a good night.